So I was joking with Mr. Rowe that the first budget message I wrote here 11 years ago was 12 pages. This budget message is 25 pages. I'm not, that doesn't represent an improvement, by the way, necessarily. So, thank you. What I want to do with you this evening is walk you through what is essentially two budgets that we've prepared. A presentation associated with the numbers that the Board of Selectmen authorized as an override question and the numbers that assume the base town-school partnership along with the other elements, that is, some town reductions, and where we stand in terms of those two spending plans. So let me take you through, though, first, some background information. So, you know, it's important, we think, to begin, talk about our budget with our mission. I think, as Ethan pointed out really clearly for us, what is it that we're trying to achieve for each and every student here? What are the priorities in terms of some issues that we struggle with in terms of our academic and social programs? And so, you know, our mission statement, "To ensure that every student develops the skills and knowledge to pursue a productive and fulfilling life, to participate thoughtfully in a democracy, and to succeed in a diverse and evolving global society," are very important, and I would argue, given the changes in our demographics that have come along with our growth, even more important today than they were when we first put our strategic plan together a number of years ago. Our core values of high achievement for all, excellence in teaching, collaboration, respect for human differences, and educational equity demand, in my view, that we fund certain priorities and that we pay attention to these elements as we consider where our money will be spent. And so you've seen this slide any number of times, right? So we, way back when we originally put a presentation together for the Override Study Committee, said, "These are some areas where we believe that we live those core values." We believe very strongly that things like our class-size parameters, the fact that we fund early education programs, which I'm going to spend some time on tonight, that we're trying to achieve more and more inclusive classrooms, all fall under this area of high achievement for all. That areas like the Professional Development Program, the fact that we really adhere to both the letter and the spirit of state requirements around mentoring programs, is really about our belief in every teacher and the excellence that's required in every classroom for all students. That Extended Day, Parents as Partners, the Community Foundation, all these, we lock in Leslie interns, that those are all about the collaboration and partnerships that we form. The respect for human differences really goes to our programs like Responsive Classroom, Developmental Design, our advisory programs. What you'll see in this budget is really a renewed focus, I think, on our English Language Learner programs and a more fully developed definition of what that actually means in a district where now over 10% of the student body are qualified for ELL services. And in terms of educational equity, in terms of the work being done now with staff around cultural proficiency, in terms of these various programs, some of which I alluded to when speaking to Ethan's report, things that have made a difference, where we've started to move some numbers in terms of students and the courses that they are in, but certainly where there's a lot more work to be done. So, you know, I think the importance of this slide is in terms of holding ourselves accountable to those core values. And then our goals in the 2.0 version of the strategic plan of every student achieving and how do we live that in terms of where we spend our money? Every student invested in their learning. I think certainly Ms. Treulowski mentioned the work that the Curriculum Subcommittee is doing around the recommendations in enrichment and challenge support. And those recommendations out of that report go far and beyond a gifted and talented program, to really talking about what kinds of conditions can be set for all students, students prepared for change and challenge, and every educator growing professionally. So we really believe that we're charged with creating a spending plan that advances what we do in this district around our mission, vision, and core values. You know, I don't have some of the slides that support this, but over and over again we've said recently that this district continues to be a high-achieving district, even as our enrollments have increased. However, there are persistent achievement gaps, and there is a leveling off that has occurred, and we believe that is tied to the fact that class sizes have ticked up slightly. We believe that's related to the fact that supports for struggling students have not been where we've been able to provide our funding over the last number of years. We focused on the classroom. And we believe that's why we have, from the very beginning, why this conversation about additional funding that could be brought to programs is so critical. So enrollment growth and its implications. So I want to be very clear about this because I've seen it misquoted in a number of places. Our enrollment growth is 38% in our elementary schools since 2005. I can tell you, it's not in the message, that if you look at the entire district, the enrollment growth since 2005 is 25%. 25%. We're 25% larger as a district than we were in 2005. If you look just at the elementary schools, we are 38% larger than we were in 2005. So what's been done? And it's highlighted, discussed more fully in the message. We had a B space process that went through and made certain conclusions and recommendations. The Override Study Committee, which concluded in September of 2014, issued a report. The Board of Selectmen considered that question, and the Board of Selectmen have placed on the ballot two questions. The second, really, around debt exclusion question around the devotion school project, but the first question around about a $7.7 million operating override. And what they've said within the constraints of this question is that, really, without an override, there's an additional sum of money that would come to the school department that would be carved out through $680,000 in cuts to town departments. So there's great information, great source of information for us, recommendations, discussions that we had with the Override Study Committee. And there are a number of areas. I've highlighted four here. I'm sure others at the table could highlight more. But there are four areas where we really paid attention, honed in on some recommendations, I'll say, that were made there and have some things that have been, some things that have been in our budget for the past two years, others that are recommended here in terms of very specific kinds of issues that they discussed. One's around the use of school buildings. And again, not everyone supports these four areas, and we get that. So we've tried to be responsible in terms of the implementation of some of these. I'll discuss some of those with you tonight. In terms of the use of school buildings, we now are in the process of charging a number of our partners, our partner organizations, Extended Day, Brookline Music School, what was PALS is now Voices Over Boston, Voices Boston, Voices Boston, thank you. And the Brookline Staff Children's Center are all now paying a fee for the use of space. They were not two years ago. That was an issue that was discussed in the Override Report that we actually implemented in this year's budget and in next year's budget, fully implement. Assignment of kindergarten students. So let me just skip to this slide now. There was a lot of discussion, and we had taken a number of steps to really tighten up a process over time as our enrollment began to grow. But this past year, we took a number of additional steps. So we created the Office of Student Affairs to centralize registration and residency functions, leading what we thought would be improved client service and budgeting efficiency, and we believe that's been the case. We delayed now initial assignments till May 15th. Again, there are people that aren't happy about that. But if you live in a buffer zone, if you are a Metco student, if you are a materials fee staff student, you will not have an assignment to a school before May 15. We've been encouraged to go later than that, but we have June kindergarten orientation programs. We think it's important that families participate in those. If we go past May 15th, we can't provide families with opportunities to do that, and quite frankly, this is where the educational program trumps the efficiency. So we've delayed it to May 15th. That's much later than we used to, and has it allowed us to achieve some efficiency? Yet, I think it has. I think if you look at our numbers over the last two years, you'll see a much better balance across our kindergarten classes. That's no accident. That's been achieved by a number of these measures. We've clarified materials fee eligibility and assignment. We modified the contract, the agreement, so that it's clear about issues like a child who may need a district-wide program, so that it's clear about a child who may need an out-of-district program, so that it's clear about how we collect the materials fee, that it's only through payroll deduction. Those things have been clarified. Most people have commented to us that they appreciate the clarification, because those things are not open to debate anymore. So that's been terrific. I will tell you one other thing within that clarification. I think this is important. We've actually taken the policy, which I know we're now going to be discussing, right? But we've taken the policy to heart. We've actually divided this materials fee process into three processes. So there isn't one materials fee process. There are three. There are teachers, that's group one. That's actually been completed for this year. In other words, completed in that they've made their application. The second group is other school employees, and they're on a slightly different timeline, slightly later. And then come town employees. So there are actually three different processes that we conduct. They all look similar, but to the point of really being able to hone in on our numbers, because that's what the policy says are the priorities. The policy says the materials fee is done in that priority order. So we've actually made that clearer for people. We've delayed summer registration assignments till mid-August. So in other words, if you haven't registered by May 1st, if you register by May 1st, you have an assignment by May 15. If you come after that time, those assignments don't come till mid-August, because once you've missed the June orientation, you know, there isn't as much of a rush on our part. Many parents think there is, right? That there should be. So we delay that until after we get through the summer registration. And we've actually, at times, invited families to move from one school to another, up to the day before school, in an effort to make sure we can better balance numbers. Now, you know, I've stood in front of groups like this one, and I've read the numbers. I won't do that for you tonight. Right? I read the kindergarten numbers down the list, but as you recall, the last time I did that for you, I think the range, the average class size, was in the 21 range, and the range was two, as I recall, two, across 30-some sections. And that's pretty good. That's efficient. So that's been achieved through these steps that we've taken. So let me now take this and really complicate that with a slide you've also seen before. And that is to the point of our diversity. Right? It's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to program and budget for it, and to recognize what that actually means. So this was last year. Now remember, so why are we talking about this within the kindergarten registration? Because this is another piece that complicates it, because there have to be screenings offered. We have to figure out whether students qualify for programming. So last year's kindergarten class, 256 of the 681 students, were referred for a home language survey. That meant there was some reason, something in their background that said, "We ought to take at least a look at whether this student requires programming." Of the 256, 161 students required a language assessment. So out of 680 students, 161 required a language assessment. 154 of those students required ELL services. That's up dramatically over prior years. By the way, not over the year before. This has been steadily growing. Of the 154 students, 70 speak a language other than a language in one of our language-centered programs. And for people watching, that means we have certain schools where there's a focus on a particular language, although there are students who speak many languages in that school. We have five predominant languages. They tend to be the language-centered programs. 84 students speak languages served by our language-centered programs. Of the 84 who speak a language served by our language-centered programs, 52 chose to go to that school, even though they may live at Baker. If Hebrew is a language, they said, "Yep, devotion school seems like the right place for my child." 31 said, "No, thanks. I'd rather stay at the Baker School," even though you have a language-centered program there. And one opted out of ELL services. This slide is just to show you that these are significant numbers. So I say 10%, but in the incoming kindergarten, it's not 10%. That is Brookline. That is Brookline. So assignment of kindergarten students was one thing. Early ed tuition, they made recommendations about market rate. We've continued to look at those rates, although I'm going to talk with you some tonight about some of the complicating factors even of increases that we've made. And I gave you an example, thank you, Ms. Treulowski, for the great comment about the Office of Student Affairs. I mean, we've looked at a number of areas, the way we rent space, the way we register students, and the committee talked about centralization and efficiency of operations. And we agree with them. We were already in the process of a number of those areas, and we're taking a look at more of those areas, where a large school system like this, closing in on 8,000 students, closing in on 8,000 students, can achieve better outcomes through centralizing a number of those functions. Where was I? Ah, okay. So some of the current issues that we're dealing with, this will be a surprise to you, but we're dealing with capital issues here. That's why we spent half of our time on those Subcommittee reports, on the capital report, right? The achievement gap issues that I've mentioned and that were mentioned earlier, shifting demographic profile, which causes, I mean, we're going to have a fairly involved conversation here tonight about translation, and we did earlier this year when we got back our coordinated program review. And that's not something you can set aside anymore with the percentage of our students who require that translation and families who require that. Residency's been an issue for us. We addressed that, we believe, through the Office of Student Affairs. Special education structure, you know, if Dr. Schmuckler were here this evening, she would talk a lot, I think, with you about some pieces that we have built into the recommendations here around students and student mental health issues. Collective bargaining, and then the significant number of federal and state mandates, which, you know, along with a number of other issues that we've addressed earlier tonight, we unfortunately don't spend enough time talking about, which are being addressed by your senior staff and others every day. So the overall budget picture for FY '16. Our October 1st elementary enrollment is about 54, was about 5,400 students. It increased to 5,470 as of March 1st. So again, that 54 student or so increase over that period of time. The current kindergarten is 703. The FY '16 House One proposal, there was, there's an assumption in that proposal, and again, we were working on both sides here of the governor releasing his budget. There was an assumption of an $850,000 increase in Chapter 70, which is school aid, and unrestricted general government aid, which I just love to call UGA. And so what we know now is that the actual increase is somewhat larger. It's slightly larger, which is great news. Circuit Breaker was essentially level-funded, although, as was pointed out, it's still only funded at 2/3, and the law calls for 75%. And here in Brookline, the good news is that we will have a smaller claim than in FY '15 due to improved outcomes and services. So we're going to lose $200,000, and that's the good news. Because what that means in Circuit Breaker talk is that we've improved outcomes, we've improved services for students, we have less students who are of a cost level where they qualify for Circuit Breaker, and therefore, our submission is lower. And that's good news. Local town receipts are projected to be up more than $800,000, and that's without any of the non-tax revenue items that the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator have talked about. And health insurance was assumed to increase by 4%, and I actually think, Mr. Rowe, I'm wrong here, because I said the actual increase will be higher, approximately 6.5%, but I actually believe it's higher than that.
It's closer to eight.
Yeah, it's closer to eight. So I'm, that's wrong. It's closer to eight. And that's with some changes that the GIC has made to plan. I have one or two little things like that, yes, that I need to do. So we have concerns about a number of things as this plays out through the spring, right? We often get accused, because of the way the process works, of changing the numbers as we go. And that's only said because it's true. Right? Because we now go through a process with the House and the Senate, right? Numbers become sharper. But let me talk with you about a couple of areas of concern. So I don't think this first one is huge, but it's worth noting, and that is that House One is House One. Right? It doesn't guarantee Chapter 70 and unrestricted general government aid. Now, there is talk of a local aid resolution, which would mean the House and Senate would put their stamp on these numbers, Chapter 70 and unrestricted general government aid. Sometimes we think that would be bad news. This actually, we actually think that might be good news, because that would say, "These are the numbers, work with them." Okay? So, but we don't know that right now. So that's one area, is those numbers could change. Right? February revenues weren't very good. The second is health insurance, right? Where we think now the range is in the 8% range, but let me point out again, that 8% was arrived at through plan changes, which many groups, many cities and towns are not happy about. So those are the rates we've been given. Again, there will be more discussion on those. More to the point, however, are these other three areas. So, and I didn't hear anybody mention this up front. I didn't hear anybody mention this up front. So Full Day kindergarten expansion grant is gone in House One. It doesn't exist. So what the governor's budget team did in House One was they took a number of what I'll call here targeted assistance areas, particularly grant, funding for certain programs, and they eliminated them. They took the dollars, or I should say, 80% of the dollars, and put them in more of a block grant form, under the control of the Department of Education, to use for underperforming schools and underperforming districts. So in House One, Full Day kindergarten expansion grant is gone, which means depending on which number you want to use, the number before the 9C cut or after the 9C cut, we lost between $250,000 and $325,000. Now what we know, right, is that the legislature likes targeted assistance programs because they can target things back to their community. So it remains to be seen whether this approach will hold as this gets to the House and Senate. But right now, we're assuming, but it's not assumed in this plan. It's not assumed in this plan. We've held the numbers that we went into the plan with. There's a loss of a Full Gate kindergarten expansion grant. I will tell you, our association, for one, has taken the view that this makes, it makes perfect sense as a longer-term approach. If you're going to phase out something that was expansion, particularly for districts that expanded to that number 15 to 20 years ago, that can make sense. It should have been phased in over some period of time, so we could plan for it. Planning is good. Right? But that's not the way that it was approached. Metco has been fully funded to beginning of the year FY '15 numbers. That's important, because there was a 9C cut that affected us of about $110,000. Now, we're worried that when this gets into the House and Senate, we see the normal things that we see in the House and the Senate. The House, generally, we see Metco increased. The Senate usually reduces it, sometimes to below House One. So we have to pay attention to that, because right now, it's been restored to beginning of the year FY '15 levels, which, by the way, as the Lieutenant Governor said, as she was announcing some things about UGA and Chapter 70, level funding is a cut. Level funding is a cut. And then there's federal grants, which we know nothing about at this point. Right? So we have to monitor these and see what happens in Title I, what happens in special education, and a laundry list of others. And so you'll see grant contingencies. So somebody might say, as someone said to me the other day, "Oh, good, you don't need the grant contingency, because in House One, you got your Metco money back." No. We haven't seen anything on federal grants yet. So we actually don't know that. And we lost kindergarten, by the way. Okay? So these are areas to watch. You know, again, I think this is a good slide, because throughout the spring, we can sometimes, people say, "Well, what happened? You said, right?" Here's some important areas for us all to pay attention to. So in the budget message in the past number of years, we've focused, up till last year, on these first three areas and said, "Here are our priorities. Here's what we've funded. Here's what we've built our budgets around." Right? And I said to you, unfortunately, we'd focused on these first three at the expense of these others up until last year. We did invest in great classroom teachers and limited class size. We did focus on professional learning and rigorous evaluation of the curriculum program, our program review. We did say that we believe that serving Brookline students in Brookline schools is best for our students, families, and communities. We built programs that allowed us to bring students back. Really, for the first time last year, we had the opportunity to sort of stick our toe in the water a little bit of some other areas, start paying attention, at least on some level in that bridge experience, to some of these other areas. We were able to fund, for example, some, a first year of our technology plan. We were able to fund some limited areas of guidance, those areas like that. But many of these areas, we couldn't touch. Right? But we said, "These are our priorities." So we talked about the pre-K-8 model being best for Brookline. We talked about neighborhood schools, the fact that teachers matter, that programs like materials fee, their professional learning, all matter, that a diverse student body requires high levels of instructional sophistication and differentiation, and equity across schools and service delivery is key. The quality early education programs are really important to our schools, particularly given the diversity in this school system. The technology, we believe, is essential to high-quality educational environments. The Metco program is an important part of this school system, and that larger school systems require an adequately staffed central administration. It isn't enough to merely fund classroom teachers. And so what I want to play out with you for some of the rest of this is where we've tried to take some of these other pieces, and just as we've been saying to the Override Study Committee and every other group that would listen and some that wouldn't, since October of 2013, we believe we've put since October of 2013, we believe we've put forward priorities that, that in Year One, or 1A if you count the bridge budget of last year, address these issues. So, two different budget proposals. You saw this slide the last time we were together when we talked about the budget preview. So the override budget, which is the first that I'm going to talk about, assumes 3.25 million from the Town School Partnership for FY16. It assumes 7.7 million from an operating override, approximately 6.2 million of which would be available in FY16. It assumes an additional 2.2 million in non-tax revenues to be implemented beginning in FY17. All of the things that the Board of Selectmen laid out, there's no assumptions on the part of the School Department there that weren't factored into Mr. Cronin's presentations and what the Board of Selectmen adopted. The no-override budget assumes 3.25 million from the Town School Partnership for FY16, and it assumes an additional $682,000 from the Town School Partnership created through municipal budget cuts. So about $3.9 million in total. Okay? That's the framework. Okay. So let's start through the override spending proposal. I have a couple corrections to do here, right? So the Town School Partnership assumes 3.25 million. The proposed override Year One is 6.2 million. Reserves. So let me talk about reserves for a minute. We went into the beginning of this year with about 1.3 million in reserves, of which we budgeted a million. We've reported to you in the first quarter and the second quarter that we believe we have about a $500,000 surplus. Funny name for it when you're talking about it against not spending reserves, right? Which would leave us, which will leave us about $500,000, which when coupled with the $300,000 left from the original 1.3, means we have about $800,000 available in reserves. We have proposed here, spending those reserves, $300,000 in Year One, which actually represents a $200,000 reduction in what we spend from reserves, and then $250,000 in, in the next two years. If that plan were to hold, we would exhaust the reserves in that third year. Now, I want to be really clear here. If we didn't, that would mean we ran a surplus. And that would not be a bad thing. I mean, to the last two years, we've had a number of people say to us, "You always end up with reserves." And I think Mr. Rowe has a slide, I think he does, where he shows our history in terms of ending balances and when we've been back to the Advisory Committee for, for reserve fund transfers. It's happened, I believe, twice in the 11 years I've been here and it hasn't happened in, I believe, five years. Right? In those other years, we've run a surplus. And so the worst thing that's happened is we've been able to put that money back into our reserves. I can tell you that in many communities, we'd be applauded for that. So we've budgeted them. We believe we've budgeted them responsibly as a step, in a step-down approach over these three years. And again, if we, if we, if we threw good luck in terms of our outside placements or other kinds of programming decisions, you know, we could have some, some amount of reserves left at the end of that period of time. Some of that will depend on some of the other things here. In Circuit Breaker, we've budgeted 1.55 million. That's a $200,000 reduction, as I said earlier, a $200,000 reduction from the actual reimbursement this year because Circuit Breaker is associated with those high-cost students and those numbers have gone down. And building rental is an additional $75,000. Remember that with our partner organizations this year, we actually implemented 50% of that building use fee. This assumes the second 50% of that building use fee with those partners in, in FY16. So that would make available to us 9.1 million in FY16. So there are repeats between the two spending plans. There are priorities between these two spending plans, but I'll, but I'll go through them for you. So in elementary class, in the override spending plan, elementary classrooms, K to 5 teachers, there are... Let me find my notes, I'm sorry. I didn't put FTEs on the, on the slide, but they are, they are fully described in the budget message. This is 3.0 FTE, and it assumes an incoming kindergarten class of 650 students, which we believe we're on our way to minimally. The message contains the schools that they're at, and that's based on moving all of our classes along and adding a kindergarten that has the same number of sections as this year. So it essentially adds three sections. At the middle grades, we add 2.2 FTE. And again, this is, this is a brown assuming class sizes of up to 25 students in Grades 6 through 8. And remember that we still have relatively smaller groups at the middle level. Some have said, "Why, when, when do we level off at the elementary level and, and, and stay there?" And the answer to that is when our eighth grade kind of equals our kindergarten. Right? But as long as the incoming groups are 650 to 700 and the seventh and eighth grades are still the first of these growth years, remember those, right? When, when it was 525 kids and we said that was large, we're going to continue to see even the elementary schools increase in size as now the high school begins to increase in size. Elementary specialists, remember, this is physical education, health, performing arts, visual arts, and elementary world language. And this assumes a need for 2.9 FTE. We vetted these very carefully with the coordinators, with principals, through Dr. Fisher-Muller's office in terms of looking, and I believe, I believe there are slides or in the message, it actually goes into some of the specifics of this. And then we get to the, the, the first discussion of what's a little bit more complicated of an endeavor, right? And that is the opening of another school. So in this $677,000, which allows us to move the Grades 7 and 8 to Old Lincoln School from Devotion to Upper Devotion at Old Lincoln for FY16, with Grade 5 and 6 to follow in... That's supposed to say FY17, sorry. It does not include the positions that are transferred from Devotion School. So we know there are math teachers who go over from the middle grades. That's not counted in this, in this. This is the increase. This is around opening a school. And again, the budget message is very clear in terms of the specifics around these. And let me be clear, because there's a difference between this override and non-override spending plan. And that difference is that in this plan, we planned. In this plan, we were able to look at this as a, as a three-to-four-year endeavor. We were able to say, in the second year, the example I've used, in the second year of this, we need a full-time guidance counselor. So what we're doing here is we're bringing on a full-time guidance counselor. Because to try to bring on a half-time guidance counselor while saying, "In Year Two, this is a full-time job," is much more difficult and limits the pool. So we've adopted that stance. We've been able to adopt that stance here. You won't see that stance adopted in the non-override budget where we've had to be... I, I, I think, I, I think we've compromised the, the quality of the pool in a number of areas in terms of what we've had to do. Brookline High School teachers are 1.7 FTE, including 1.2 classroom teachers and .5 devoted to college and career, the college and career center at the high school. And that 1.2... By the way, the majority of what you see here is, is, matches up identically, probably not the Upper Devotion at Old Lincoln School, with the plan that we provided to the Override Study Committee in October of 13, adjusted for our new enrollment. So, you know, as I've said to some people, "Nothing new here." You've seen this before in those, in those documents back from October of 13. So there are a number of areas that we've addressed here that are enrollment-related. We have focused this plan on the literacy model, the literacy coach model, 4.3 FTE across our schools with a goal of reducing the number of students who are in need of intervention in our schools. And we've been through with the Curriculum Subcommittee. We've discussed with you a number of times the approach, the model there, and, and the, and the goals of that program. The enrichment and challenge support program increases here by 1.5 ECS resource teachers, .4 in terms of the ECS administration, and 1.1 in terms of math specialists to support ECS. This is an implementation of the challenge framework described by the ECS Program Review Committee. And again, there's a, there's a fairly detailed discussion of that model in the budget, in the, in the budget message. Math specialists are increased here by 2.5 FTE. And again, this is to enhance the math specialist model across our schools as described, very much as described in those original documents that went to the Override Study Committee. We've, we've provided that staffing across our schools. We have proposed here $55,000 to address the, the issue of middle-grade advisory. So what we've done here is essentially taken the high school model of how we implement advisory, which is a stipend approach for teachers in advisory, and we've used it in 7 and 8 because we've moved advisory into our Grades 6, 7, and 8 over the last number of years. So we've essentially adopted that, that approach at the middle grade. I, I will, I, I will say that as is always the case with, with any type of our budget presentation, there are areas of discussion here with our union and with others around actually the, the details of implementing some of these things. This is one of them. We've heard from PTOs regularly over the last number of years about the amount of dollars that they are putting into before and after-school kinds of supports and programs. And we've suggested in the model, putting some dollars in the hands of building principals to support before and after-school programming beyond extended day, mainly for middle level, because extended day in most schools does not assist with the middle, middle-level grades to actually be able to provide some of that programming. In terms of, and by the way, that area and this next area couple around a goal of ours of putting additional dollars in the hands of principals, as we've been describing for the last two years. So we've added dollars as specified in the original plan around professional learning and innovation, and we've driven 100,000 of that 150,000 to principals to use for building-level school improvement plan initiatives in their building, the professional learning of their staff around, around those initiatives. Because as we've said to you a number of times over the years, I mean, one of the things, one of the things that we find in this district is that unlike many other districts, very few dollars are in the hands of principals around the goals that they're asked to achieve. And we've tried to remedy some of those issues in this, in this spending plan. Instructional supplies have been increased by 10%. They've not been increased in some number of years. That's a number that's consistent with the original model that we provided. We've added .6, I believe it is, English language learner teachers, .6, and that's direct service. The next two are not. The next two areas are really focused around this area of screening, which I highlighted earlier in the message for you, and this area of translation. So when you look at the number of, again, people who want us to be, who, who want us to work to be more efficient around an area like this. The model that we use presently was built for a much smaller school system with a much lesser population of students who require ELL screening. What happens now is we have teachers who come in during the summer months to conduct screenings, when they're available. So we can't make assignments, the Office of Student Affairs, the Superintendent's Office, until they can screen the students and tell us whether the student A qualifies for a program, B, whether it's one of our language-based programs, what we need to do. So we don't have information that we need. Okay? What we've done is researched very carefully the models in places that have the kind of substantial populations that we have. And by the way, I point out in the message that this is now the 22nd-largest ELL population in the Commonwealth, Brookline, Massachusetts. So we've tried to look at models that better address that type of a population, that, those numbers. And what we've seen in Somerville and Cambridge as two models in terms of the way they address this issue of screening is they have someone in their parent center. They have someone in their Office of Student Affairs who conducts those screenings as people register. Then you begin the process. The process is now moving, whereas our process needs to wait for a teacher to be available, whether they're, from their teaching, if it's during the school year, or in the summer, when they're available to come in. The next budget provides a budget, actually, for the person to do the number of translations. You heard tonight, and I applaud it. I think it's the right thing to do. We've increased the numbers of translations that we need to do by adding documents to the pool of what needs to be translated. So we've provided staffing here to make sure that happens, and we've provided a budget so that the person can actually make sure that those documents that are core documents to the district, as well as those documents that are specified in your policies, in our policies, are translated. And we think this is a significant leap forward for us. We, we have a pro, we have a project, again, to some of the discussion earlier. We have a project that's begun at the elementary level at the Driscoll School in terms of providing a mentoring program for students at Grade 5, Jennifer, is that right? Grade 5, yeah. An African-American-Latino Scholars Mentoring Program, involving our high school staff, involving students from the high school in encouraging students around being scholars and getting involved in that program as they go through the middle grades and into the high school. As was specified in the model, we've added a staffing position to Steps to Success. We were in discussions now with, with them as to what, what role that will play. Many of you have heard the ongoing conversations about, "Should that be expanding the program into younger grades? Should it be expanding the program beyond public housing?" Because what we know from documents that we've seen is that a significant number of people in this town who are living in poverty are not living in public housing. And so that will, that's a discussion to, with them yet. And, and this next point is another, another important one. We have, we've worked carefully with our early education programs around the number of students, the number of requests, the amount of requests we have for scholarship money, which is more in the $250,000 range. What we've provided here is $100,000 for scholarships for our early education programs so that we can make sure that students who need the program, that money's not an obstacle. I will tell you that our goal over the next number of years is to make sure that money is not an obstacle to people who need our early education programs. There are a number of public school programs in the Commonwealth now that are engaged in that practice, Mashpee being one of them, where money is not, money is not an obstacle to students participating in their early education program, and I think we need to work hard to get there. Building repair and maintenance is the 100,000 that we specified in the plan. Administration is the two positions that were specified in the plan. And again, what was alluded to earlier is that, I believe, one of our next two meetings, the Collins Center people will be here to provide you with their report as to recommendations, which by the way, don't just focus on administration, but also focus on areas like policy procedures, efficiencies in our protocols, and the use of technology to become a more efficient district to support nearly 8,000 students. Administrative supports, which we've, which we've written in around... We, we still have a number of areas that have grown. The one is the area, for example, of ELL that is supported by, by a, a, a support person, a secretarial support person, that is shared with another function. And some of those functions, we're just not going to be able to continue on in that way, given the increased workload created by addition- given the increased workload created by additional students. And in our contract this year, we actually increased tuition reimbursement by a small amount, and we've included that in the budget line here as well. In student services, we've increased nursing, let me find it, by .9 FTE across a few of our schools. Again, the individual schools are specified in the message. We've increased guidance by .4 FTE. And we have created in this model, a supportive learning center model, which accomplishes some of the same goals as our high school bright program. This has been an increasing area of conversation with our elementary principals over the last number of years. This is about the number of students who are returning from hospitalization and need something as a transition to that experience, back to their elementary school, as well as students who come back to us from concussions. I mean, a number of kinds of things that that program, this is not, Dr. Schmuckler would have me say, this is not a special education program. But that does not mean that students who have IEPs would not necessarily benefit from this program. The purpose of this program is to transition students back to their elementary school. Response to interventions, again, specified from the very beginning in the plan, was really around creating more preventative services. One of the downsides of what we've done over the last number of years in special education has been that we've added a number of these roles, BCBA's, OTs, speech, OTs being occupational therapy, sorry. We've added those areas, and they've been special ed only. And so students who might be able to benefit from those supports in a regular education setting and thereby keep them out of special education, don't get those supports in that way. This is the beginnings of a building of what most of the districts that we've examined already have, and that's a response to intervention model around related services to prevent unnecessary referrals to special education. And, most importantly, off of the conversation I was involved in yesterday, to address disproportionate use of special education to serve students with opportunity and education gaps. Students, for example, who have IEPs around language-based needs, who are ELL, which is a common occurrence across not only Massachusetts school districts, but school districts in this country. Special education, we have added a number of roles here around particular needs. So there are 5.0 FTEs in elementary special education teachers. This is because of the growing population of students in our autism and language-based learning disability programming. By the way, that second one, we should all say hurrah, because that was a program a number of years ago, as I stood here and we discussed it. It had low enrollments, and we had quite an issue around the use of landmark and carol among families as their version of the district-wide program. Now we're talking about a need to increase staffing in the language-based learning disability program because of the number of students, the number of parents who believe we have something of quality to offer. This is good news because it's preventing the unnecessary use of landmark and carol for those kinds of situations. And the increase in the complex developmental and learning needs requiring intensive levels of service in our schools. High school special education, again, growing need for autism and therapeutic social emotional support programming. Our population of students in the RISE autism program is moving toward the high school. And we haven't had the need of that type of programming there to date, as much of that programming, and now we do. And the other really important thing here, which again is good news, is the need for job development for our 18- to 22-year-old students. So we have more of a population of students who are exercising, their families are exercising their right to be with us until age 22. A legal requirement of special education past age 14 is the need for transition planning. Transition planning for those students often involves job development and job coaching. And we've increased the number of students in that group at Brookline High School and now have need of additional job coaching and job support for them. So that's the increase at the high school. Assistive technology is a restructuring. We presently, you've heard this speech from us before on a number of things, we presently do a lot of contracting out. The amount of assistive technology that we need in terms of support services and consultation for students is growing. And we believe now an examination of that programming says that we should bring it in-house. The full cost, I believe, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, but based on the savings achieved through the restructuring of the contracting out, we're able to do that for a net cost of $56,000. By the way, terrible example, but because I know sometimes we get accused of talking in jargon particularly around these areas. I mean, assistive technology, historically, I have a daughter, you've heard this from me before, who's benefited from many versions of assistive technology. She's an obvious case to some people, she's legally blind. Many kids benefit from assistive technology who don't necessarily have that type of physical disability. Sometimes it can be technology. In her case, early on, it was reading devices, enlarging devices, but migrated to technology. Those are the kinds of things that someone with expertise sits in a team meeting and says, "I believe that the learning experience for this child can be enhanced by this type of assistive technology." We've gotten to the point where we believe it is more efficient for us to do those services in district than have them out of district. Simple explanation. Another area where we've done some additional work, we've talked to you over the last number of years about home-based services. Again, this is largely our autism population who have these services provided in the home. And what we've taken a look at here is the issue of extended school year, which again is a requirement in many IEPs, the issue of home services, and our specialized programming. And we've said, when we take a close look at what we're spending on the administration of those programs, we believe we can consolidate them under one role, and we can actually do it more efficiently. And because there's a savings, the net cost of doing that in home services and extended school year largely in those two areas is $84,000. Also in special education, we've added, let me go back, we've added 1.4 of our board-certified behavior analyst roles, but again, because of the growing number of students in the district on the autism spectrum who require home-based services. Psychologist clinician, we've added 3.4 FTE because of the growing increasingly complex needs of students with mental health and social emotional disabilities in our system, and serving those students in our system. Related services is in two areas, speech and OT, it's equivalent of a 1.0 FTE. Inclusion support is at, I believe, Lawrence School, and that's a .5 FTE. Administration is what we believe is a more efficient way of managing our therapeutic learning center program and the support program that I talked about earlier. And we believe we can achieve that for a net of $15,000 by looking at a position that's Unit A and possibly looking at it as Unit B position instead. Paraprofessionals, those are somewhat at the high school, and I believe there's one elementary school there as well, 3.38 FTE. And clerical support, which is associated largely with home-based services, taking one of our clerical positions, we've called it a .3 FTE here, but essentially taking it to full year, from what's now school year to full year, because those services also get managed during the summer. So in technology, the plan is year two of the plan. I mean, again, you've seen these numbers before. Last year, we were fortunate enough within the bridge budget to be able to implement year one, and this calls for the implementation of year two. It is largely focused around addressing equity by leasing new devices, beginning operational support of tablets that we have available in a number of locations, including some of our special education centers, supporting the learning management system at Brookline High School, and implementing an LMS at the elementary school, continuing to build our digital content for students, including ebook collections, establishing new subscription services, and increasing our software licensing. I mean, exactly what was described in our plan, continuing to advance data collection practices to support the timely turnaround of assessment data necessary to inform instruction for principals, for teachers, promoting inquiry and innovative projects for gaining maximum benefit of digital learning and tools of technology. In other words, funding for innovation. Advancing the installation of mounted projection, which last year was in the capital improvement plan, but this year has been included in this budget. We can increase that by about 40, I believe we're largely looking at that at Brookline High School, as I recall. And beginning to provide some of the staffing necessary to effectively advance all this with, through a digital learning specialist who will work with teachers and administrators around implementing applications, and a data manager to assist our Director of Research and Accountability in actually providing the essential and timely analysis of data. Because what we've got right now is a Director of Research and Accountability who's doing the data, not analyzing it. So again, very consistent with the plan we put forward and have discussed now for, as has modified slightly, for two years. So the other expenditure issues in the override plan include an assumption of collective bargaining of 2%. We are right now in the process of refreshing the numbers that you may remember that we provided to the Board of Selectmen that showed why those were good comparables to the districts that we look at. As I said, we're refreshing those numbers. We actually saw some other numbers from some other people, we're taking a look at those numbers as well, trying to see what's happened to those numbers since. But the norm in terms, in fact, the norm the town's used in their assumptions is a norm of 2%. The other thing I want to spend a little bit of time on here is steps and lanes, because I've heard some, I've heard some things said about steps and lanes, which I have to say are just not true. So the other day I heard that steps and lanes cost 5%. It is true that if you are Bachelor Step 1, Bachelor Step 1, and you move to Bachelor Step 2, the step is about 5%. That's true. I believe it's the only one where that would be true. That's not actually how I think anybody would go about analyzing steps and lanes. I think to analyze steps and lanes, you would look at the amount that you spend on steps and lanes, and the number of people who you employ who are in that agreement. I believe that's the way to look at steps and lanes. By that analysis of steps and lanes, steps and lanes cost you, cost us, budgetarily, slightly less than 2%. Slightly less than 2%. Again, we can choose any step, right? This one might cost 5, this one costs less than 1. To me, that's not the discussion. The discussion is what do they cost? What do they cost as a group? 2%, slightly less than 2%. Outside placements, we've budgeted $375,000. We've been through this discussion earlier tonight. That's largely to take care of other placements that we may have that are not included in the rest of our spending plan. That is to take care of those increases when we see them from restructuring that may occur over the coming months. We have to budget for increased cost of outside placements, outside special education placements. We've budgeted $50,000 here associated with the devotion building committee. The school committees heard me say regularly that I think, I think the amount of time we're asking a principal to step out of a building, particularly a large building, to be associated with the building project, is really an inefficient use of their time, that I think we need to have some sort of a liaison, an educational liaison. We've looked at that. We're lucky enough to have an interim principal at the building who's expressed an interest in working with us around continuing on with the project, and is by the way, very good at that kind of work, very helpful, would be very helpful to the people in the building. So that's the budget there. Grant contingency, again, I've been through that. We've set aside $100,000 to deal with issues that may come up around, let's see, Metco, kindergarten, and any of the federal areas. General ed contingency, this is the number we've used for a number of years now to, as a set aside here to guard against increased numbers of sections. You know, like when you budget for 650 and you have 703. Special ed contingency, $100,000, again, largely associated with our in-district programs where there may be some need for an increase of a paraprofessional, it's to allow special education to do those kinds of things. In this budget, because of the number of FTEs that are added, because of our discussion with the town, because of those increased costs of health insurance, we've actually set aside a $250,000 health insurance contingency. And again, it's associated with all of those areas, whether it's the, whether it's what GIC came in above what we originally projected, or whether it's the number of FTE that are in here, which Mr. Rowe's going to discuss with you later. We've set aside $50,000 in this spending plan to help us get our athletic revolving account back in sync. We have a structural deficit there, we believe it can be addressed, we believe that can be fixed. What we've done is we've actually set aside the amount of money that we've often had to move over the last number of years to athletics to address that. But we've pledged here through, particularly the way we're collecting fees now, to move toward what I think is a budget where we don't, where that won't continue beyond this year, because we can balance that revolving account. So that is the override spending plan. So the no override spending plan, we start with revenue growth again. And again, we start out with the town-school partnership, and the number is 3.93 million, and that's the 3.25 million that I talked about earlier, with 682,000 that come from reduction town budgets. Reserves are budgeted in exactly the same way as I described earlier. 300,000 in year one, 250,000 in year two, $250,000 in year three. Circuit breaker, exactly the same as we discussed earlier. Building rental, in terms of what we have in place now, implemented in exactly the same way, second half of the program, $75,000. Here's the change. We've actually increased the amount of revenue assumed from fees increases. Some of that, we'll need to come back to you by the way on the specifics of this, some of that will be increased to those building rentals. So those partner organizations in this no override plan will pay, by our recommendations to you, will pay more. Some of it may be increases in athletic fees, some of it may be increases in early education But there will be increases in fees in this plan, and that makes available to us 3.9 million dollars. So what happens in this plan? So the elementary classrooms is exactly the same. We add three sections. You're going to see something later that may strike you as confusing, but we add three classes, and they're probably at the primary level. We do the same thing in the middle level. We add the same amount, because the middle level is very difficult to parse apart. We add the same amount in specialists for those sections. Upper devotion at Old Lincoln School is not implemented in the same way as in the other plan. And what I've said here is it does not include a vice principal that would have to be shared with the present devotion staffing in a model that we haven't yet developed. We only add a .5 guidance counselor, which again, given that the building needs a 1.0 in year two, is more difficult. And we don't add the dollars for professional development. So two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I was asked by this committee, is there any compromise to what we heard the principal stand in front of us and talk about? The only compromise, if you will, is that professional learning money will have to come from somewhere else. So come from the rest of our budget. come from somewhere else, so come from the rest of our budget, which means something else won't happen. At Brookline High School, it does not include the 1.2 FTE classroom teachers. It does include the career, college and career guidance. So, there are changes. We fund the literacy model in the same way, and I'll say here, and if need be in questions, I'm happy to have Dr. Fisher-Mueller speak to this, because beyond the literacy model being important to that overall initiative, which I think the word Dr. Fisher-Mueller's used a couple of times over the past months or so is, has stalled, as we've had to implement that model much slower. This is also the model that we're using to model coaching across the district, right? So, we're using to implement that and to look at it in other ways, and I know you may want to come up later on when there are questions, because there will be, I'm sure. English language learners, we've implemented here only the staffing at the building level, only the .6. What's not included in this proposal are the math specialists, the enrichment and challenge support change to that program, the materials and supplies, the middle grade advisory, the steps to success, the professional learning and innovation, the before and after school supports, the early education scholarships, and the administration. None of those are included in this spending plan. The student service proposals that we talked about, nurses' guidance, response to intervention, and the elementary supportive learning center, none of it is included in this spending plan. Elementary special education teachers, high school special education teachers, our administrative proposal around home services, those are included. They're included because we believe they're mandated. We believe in order to fulfill needs for increasing numbers of students in those programs, we have to fund those. The BCBA, we did not fund the psychologist and clinician, what you see here in psychologist, second bullet's important, it provides only the mandated services for students with IEPs. In other words, the regular education interventions, the preventative services that we attempted to put in place don't happen in this spending plan. Related services, paraprofessionals, it does not include proposals to address assistive technology and inclusion support or administration. In technology, we will be able to, within a budget of $336,000, lease purchase 450 new devices for the second phase of equitable distribution to schools, down from the original 600 new devices. We will be able to meet current obligations for online subscriptions, but nothing more. We will complete mounted projection at Brookline High School and provide some limited mounted projection at devotion at OLS, and we will support some new tools, the learning management system at Brookline High School, the student information system, which is not new, X2, our evaluation tool, which is not new, registration gateway, and school wires. And that's it. We will not be able to increase our inventory of devices to meet our goals for equity. We will not be able to provide support for classroom tablets, to implement the professional development, management, and resource tool, the K to 8 learning management system, system-wide materials and supplies with an inventory management tool, provide teachers with user-friendly and timely display of student learning data, support innovative projects, or add the staffing positions. None of that happens in the no-override spending plan. No-override spending plan assumes only a 1% collective bargaining. There's a 1% assumption for collective bargaining here. I want to point out here, because it's a public document, that that's what you own. That's what we currently own. Our contract was a 2% at mid-year, meaning 1% this year, the second 1% implemented next year. That 1% is what you own. The 2% that I talked about earlier in the override plan is the 1% we own and room for negotiations around an addition, up to an additional 1%. This assumes that what we have in the collective bargaining agreement is what we have. Outside placements, we still held at $375,000. The devotion building project, we still think that's critical around the management of that project, the liaison work to the principal. Grant contingency, we're going to, we're going to need. General ed contingency, and what we've added here that I want to explain in a second when I get into the cuts, is a referral contingency of $110,000. So, if you'll allow me, I'm just going to come back to that when I talk about the reductions. So, in this spending plan, we have to reduce, to do even what we've laid out there, we have to reduce spending by about 1.15 million. And the way we propose doing that is in six areas. The first is that we've consolidated elementary classrooms. So, here's what that means. We've identified five, we'll identify five elementary sections for merging across our elementary schools. Here's what I want to tell you. They will be in grades 4 through 6, pretty much exclusively. They will not be in K through 3, at least in our examination to date. They will not be the consolidations we've discussed in the past. In the past, we've looked at consolidations, we've looked at a group that may be 75 students. We've said that number's dropped over a number of years, they're in 5th grade. We've taken a look at other things about the class, numbers of free and reduced lunch, ELL, special education, the years of experience of the teaching staff, and we've said, we think we can make a consolidation there, and it works. This is not that. This is looking at grade levels where there are currently 80 students in four sections and making it three. This is looking at sections where currently there are 59 students in one grade level at a school, 59 students, and because of those other factors I laid out, and they're in three sections and making it two. Class sizes across the intermediate grades with this proposal will range more, there will still be 23s and 24s and 25s, and there will be 27s and 28s and 29s. I'll be frank with you. We have identified right now in our beginning, on Monday, conversations with principals around 10, 10 classes that may fit that profile, but we have to look at other elements that I laid out a minute ago for you. ELL, special education, teaching staff experience, those kinds of things, and we're going to discuss that with principals and begin to make some judgments. We may also survey parents, the way we have in the past, as to people returning, but this budget is dependent upon what I'll say here is forcing five consolidations. And our goal is to identify those, you know, within the next three or four weeks, because this is as good a time as any to say to you. I mean, one of the things that I think you already know is that we have, one of the complicating factors for us is that we have to actually proceed as if we're implementing both these budgets. Because you don't wait till May the 5th to begin to advertise a position. So, as is normal practice throughout the Commonwealth, and as has been normal practice here forever, there will be some positions that we will post, and we will post them as anticipated, if they happen to be in the override spending plan, so that if, you know, if that's where we are on May 5th, we can begin to move. At the same time, we'll be talking with principals about what this consolidation looks like and what that looks like to teachers and who might get moved out of, so we're having both those conversations at the same time. So, this leads me back to this, this last item. There's a referral contingency in there because of this, folks. Increased class size, larger class sizes lead to more referrals. Notice, I didn't say necessarily more special education, I didn't say more out of district, right? But what we know from the research, from the studies, is that it leads to more referrals. So, I've had to budget here for an increased contingency for those referrals, because the referrals will increase. The second budget reduction is to eliminate positions at Brookline High School, five positions, five positions, and we haven't sat down with the headmaster and talked about what those are yet, but they only fall into three buckets, right? They can, we can, it would either lead to larger class sizes, it would lead to the elimination of certain electives, or it would be a reduction of supports, like tutorial. And what I should have said there is and/or, because it could actually be in all three of the buckets, right? And the identification of those positions will be, will be key. Now, I should be able to say to you about the first two, because you're going to ask me, does anyone actually lose a position in the first two? And the answer is, I don't think so, but I can't promise. And the reason I can't promise is we have a certain amount of turnover, for example, at the high school every year, but I can't promise that the positions that we're going to have open are the positions that we would have consolidated, if that makes sense. So, we're going to have to identify those. The other thing that we've done here is we've consolidated our four Metco liaison positions at the elementary level into two. Right now, we have four positions. They, they support two schools each, and we've consolidated those positions into two. You know, I will say this is very difficult, but remember, level funding is a cut. We have removed all of the student programming support from Metco that we can. We're down to people. We used to be able to provide retreats and other experiences. There are no longer funds in the Metco line because of the lack of increases and the 9C cuts we've seen, and so what we've done here is we've said we have to now go to staff. So, we proposed consolidating those positions into two. We've removed $62,000 from our professional development line, which will mean, and we need to be transparent about this, there will be less content-specific work for teachers with coordinators. Right now, teachers have those opportunities throughout the year to spend time with coordinators. There will be less of those times. We've eliminated the enrichment and challenge support program at 3.6 FTE and the .6 coordinator This is probably where the starkest difference is between these plans, in that we've, in the first model, we think we've got some really great recommendations that, as I said earlier, go beyond an enhancement to the ECS program and really help drive some of the change we're looking for in terms of differentiation across the classroom. We're very excited about that work. I know the people who were on, part of that committee were excited about that work, and you've spent some time discussing it, and in this model, that program is eliminated at $308,000. And instead of enhancing materials and supplies by approximately 10%, we've cut them by 10%. So, there's actually about a 20% difference in materials and supplies, which will mean we will have to prioritize, there will be a deferral of textbook adoptions, there will be a deferral of replacement of existing materials in this, in this spending plan. So, in both plans, just a couple things that we're, we're working on and talking about, and again, I'll leave this, I'll only highlight a couple of these, because I'll leave them to your reading of the message. Centralization is a key, both in the collection of fees, student affairs. We're very excited that the conversations earlier about space may actually allow us to create the parent center we've been looking to, to create. We may be able to do that as soon as next year, if things break in the right direction, and that would be, that would be very good for our families. I want to talk also about early education tuition, which has increased in this spending plan by 3%. Again, we pay careful attention to what the comparables are. We think that number's the right number, but even at that number, the principal has shared with me, we've discussed that it's going to increase the need for scholarships if we want to serve the students who truly need the services of our early education programs. We, in landmark, we've not increased the funding for landmark partnership, but I know committee members are very interested in this partnership. We have one school that's three-year timeline is expiring, and so we believe that we're going to be able to expand the landmark partnership into the peer school for next year. I know the principal's been very excited about that for some number of years, but next year, we'll actually be able to begin year one there. And I need to say, you know, a lot of great work that we're able to do, we're able to do because of the Brookline Education Foundation and the 21st Century Fund. The message includes some very specific information about particular programs that they help fund and support, and we can't do a lot of the great work that we're able to do without, without their tremendous efforts and support, and so this gives us another chance to thank them. We have documented, and I've spent time in the budget message in particular, on three main areas this year. We've documented in our budget messages over the years, 1.5 million in efficiencies in the past decade. In this budget message, I've provided you with a pretty detailed look at three areas. Home services, which we've spent some time talking about, and the efficiencies that were created a number of years ago when we brought those services in-house instead of contracting out. Our custodial services, where again, our negotiating committee, Mr. Rowe, negotiated language that allows us to utilize outside vendors in certain circumstances, and we've been able to achieve, we think, better service and increased efficiencies there, and the same thing in transportation, where we are constantly looking to be able to combine routes to reduce the number of buses that we, that we have on, on the road. We think those are three great examples of those efficiencies, but again, the list is a, is a pretty lengthy one. And again, the override study committee said, absent this enrollment growth, the LSC concluded that the town and school budgets would be roughly sustainable. The town is not projecting deficits, and per-student school spending has remained flat over the last five years on an inflation-adjusted basis. And so, there's a lot of noise going on back and forth, and what I would ask us to just focus on again, is we have a shared problem, and that shared problem is that our enrollments have increased. That shared problem is that in the midst of that growth, our student body has become more diverse. And we can either respond to that and allow this school system to continue to be the really great place for kids and families that it historically has been, or we can ignore, we as a town can ignore it, can ask questions like, can you really prove that this enrollment growth is sustained? And if we ignore it, those gaps that Dr. Fisher-Mueller talked about earlier, that were referenced earlier, will continue to grow. And we won't be what we're all so proud of here. So, what we hope we've put in front of you is the beginning of a conversation, what we hope we've put in front of the town are the details of what we believe can be achieved in year one, given the question that the, that the Board of Selectmen has put in front of the voters. And we hope, we, we know we will, given, as Ms. Dickoff said earlier, given that original slide that was put up there and how the print continues to shrink, which he was kind enough not to say, is that most of the shrink in print is around superintendent and budget forums. We'll be out a lot talking about this message over, over the next month. I think it's four times next week, where we're in schools and in other places, big, talking about this message and hopefully able to share with people what we can't, what we can achieve together. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions for the superintendent?
A minute, or I need a minute.
You need a minute.
I mean, the problem is that we have, you know, pages and pages of notes, and so some of the problem is sort of where to start.
I can start with a, with a non-substantive question.
Okay.
In your spare time, Bill... In your spare time, Bill, will it be possible to, to chart this so that there is a way to do a, more of a side-by-side comparison?
We're actually, we're, we're in process on a side-by-side.
Excellent. Thank you. Because that's, it's really, really hard.
We have a side-by-side.
We have a side-by-side. So it-
When, when we're ready, we have a side-by-side.
Because it's, I, I mean, we've, we've been talking about these things, as Ms. Dickoff has said, we talk about budgets many times a week in many different venues. But when it comes down to the pluses and the minuses and what it's going to do and the impacts, it's just, it's, that'll be very helpful, I think, for everybody.
Yep.
You know, there, there are a couple of places to start. I mean, one is that obviously there's a tremendous amount of thoughtfulness here. And one of the things that I appreciate is how it kind of starts with our vision, our mission, our strategic priorities, and then, and our strategic plan goals and sort of ties to those. I think one thing that might be helpful is bucketing these underneath those since they really do sort of fit pretty nicely. So that might be helpful. But I think the other thing that's striking to me is that, you know, as I went back through the override study committee report and the kinds of things that they talked about, I mean, there really are some choices implicit in here. So there are many places where efficiencies were taken and captured and identified, and then there are places where we chose not to address those. And it might be worth just sort of naming a couple. I mean, one thing that we didn't really address is the question of neighborhood schools, meaning we didn't make choices that changed the basic character of neighborhood schools because that was one of the efficiencies that was identified, that you could potentially not assign students to their neighborhood schools, and then you could save that way. We've, I think there's an implicit choice in here that we're not going in that direction. There are implicit choices in here that we are not cutting Metco students. So anyway, I think there are, and there's, there are already things that have happened in here in previous years, things like class sizes have already increased, things like-
Average of 1.5.
Average of 1.5. Over time, we've already increased our buffer zones, we've already increased school lunch fees, we've already increased athletic fees, we've already increased beep fees, we've already tightened up on residency. I mean, there's a long list of efficiencies that were taken kind of before this. And so I think if people are just sort of tuning in for the override part, we're now in, I don't know what season we're in, 11, seven. You know, I think what people didn't see is some of that, that buildup. Same thing with, you know, some of the other places on the capital side where, you know, where we didn't, for example, pursue a renovation of the Spurber Center, which would have been, I don't know, $3, $4 million for four classrooms. Instead, we went with the Baker Modular project, which, you know, is significantly less than that.
And rental, and central rental space here.
And what was the, what was the per-classroom on the modulators?
$40,000.
$40,000. Right. So there are lots of places in here, which I, again, I understand that what we're trying to do, which this is the operating budget, we have to do override versus non-override. But I'm just also wondering how to, to sort of express to the public as a sort of a challenge to all of us, like, how do we sort of weave in some of the pieces that where we've said, we are choosing not to do this, or we have already done this, or here are other choices, I think just the, that bridging of operating and capital where some of these choices have been made. So it's not so much a comment on this, but I'm just trying to contextualize this in terms of all the others, as Rebecca said, all the other conversations we're having at the exact same time. So that's just more of a comment than a question. What else? Helen?
I have one sort of small question, but not really. Are we legally obligated to do translational services because of the Department of Justice?
Yes.
So how can we not budget for it?
Well, we'll have to approach it in a different way. I mean, that's not, that's not, the approach we've taken in the second budget is that we, what we tried to do in the first budget was really address it and also make more efficient our, our screening process. I mean, we'll have to enhance some of what we're doing within the present model, which isn't a good model. It isn't a good model, but, but we didn't think we were able to commit that level of resources. I mean, we will probably have to come back to you and adjust some things because there is going to need for, going to be a need for us to use some number of dollars for the translations themselves. So the $60,000 we budgeted there, you're right, we're, we're going to have to have some sum of money in, in the, in the other plan. So that'll be one of those addendum at some point.
Right.
But yes, it's a matter of, it's a matter of, again, it's very much like the upper devotion at old Lincoln argument, right? It's a matter of, of doing something that we believe improves other areas of the operation and is more sustainable versus, you know, piecing something together.
Right.
There are a number of things, some of which I spelled out here, that in the, in the second spending plan that we gave you, we are clearly piecing together at best.
And, and just, and we're required to do it for every language, right?
We're required, well, so-
Or how does that work?
So we're required to do translation services around certain languages, which are prominent in the district, and certain, and this is where it gets a little fuzzy, right? Certain core materials. And then you start encountering issues like what else is in your policy, policies, and, and individualized kinds of services, like what happens when someone comes for an, for an IEP meeting? Or, or those kinds of things. Is that helpful?
Yes, very. Thank you.
Ms. Sharon?
I just want to add a bit to what Susan was saying about what we have done already, and I want to add it in a little different direction. I happened to be a primary source the other day, and I ran into a Brookline teacher, and I said, oh, how are things at your school? And she said to me, it's really difficult. She said, it's so difficult because we are so crowded, there are so many state mandates, it's just hard. And I think people have to realize that we have squeezed students into small rooms, we have increased class size, and all of this takes its toll on the people who are providing the services. And as I listen to this and I think about the consolidations that we are going to have to make, I think we need to remember, I don't think there's much we can do about it, but I think we need to remember that this takes its toll on our teaching staff. And it also is likely to lead to more increase, more, more referrals to special ed because a teacher in a classroom, every time you up the size of that class, you make differentiation harder. And there's only so much that one person can do to serve the needs of all of those kids. So we have been doing things as long as I have been on the school board. And in the beginning, it was kind of finding rooms, making other things rooms, and then it was smaller spaces, making them rooms, and then it was increasing class size. That takes its toll. And if we have the non-override budget, that, that toll that is being taken on our teaching staff will be increased.
Dr. Jackson?
You can go. I have one very specific question and then sort of a broader framing question. And the first question is world language. We've had earlier conversations about where that all fits. It's not in here in either version, and so I just wanted to-
Yeah, thanks for that. No, it's really helpful. So here's what, here's what we've done, and I, I should have done this, I should have said this. So we did have a conversation here about world language, and I laid out for you, using that as an example at the time, of something that you could include in, in a reduction plan that could end up being very detrimental to the program, even if the override were successful. And, and what I said that evening, just for people who are here and on TV, is, is that because those people have a very narrow license, right? And because there are districts out there starting programs right now, you know, if I'm one of those people and I'm told that the program is up for elimination, and it'll all depend on something that's going to happen on May 5th, but I know that out in XYZ district there's a job, I'm applying. So we took the approach here that we, we held off on that, but I want to be real clear. And by the way, people who are affected by this, we, we made sure people spoke with them today. They, that's our practice. I've always believed that's really key. That includes world language people because here's, here's the, here's the, here's the part two of what I just said. Back-of-the-envelope calculation says that if you make certain assumptions, reasonable assumptions, assumptions that Mr. Cronin provided with us, for us before he departed, you can pretty easily conclude that in a no-override scenario, we have a deficit next year. We start with a deficit of at least $1.3 million, of at least $1.3 million. Well, that means that the elementary world language program goes next year. It goes in the following year, in FY '17, goes in that budget. All right? It's a pretty, pretty, you know, standard set of conclusions about what state revenue might be, local revenue might be, that says minimally, we start with a $1.3 million shortfall. And in that circumstance, that program would have to be among the package of elimination. And so that's what we communicated to people today.
By contrast, this year's budget, this deficit is, and it's under no override. So it's 1.3 next year, what's the equivalent for this year?
Well, at the end of the day of adding, it was a 1.15. 1.15. No, no, no. What we had to reduce, 1 point, I mean, let's use 1.15.
And then my second question, which is more of a framing question, has to do with the reference you made more in a revenue piece of the presentation around thinking over not just year one, but years two and three. And I just, and I know we're only talking about one year's budget, but can you say a little bit about whether any of the things here we should just be mindful of in that timeframe in addition to the, the one-year implication? Given that we're not talking about a bridge budget, that we should just assume that, okay, these get, these look like this in an override or no override, and they stay the same over the next year and the next year? So I'm trying to frame it because there was a revenue piece in here where you reference revenue implications over two to three years? And so I'm just wanting to ask if there's anything else we should be thinking about on the expense side.
I don't, I, I don't think so. I mean, there, there, you know, the one piece, the one piece that comes immedi-, there are two things that come to mind, and one of them is a further explanation of the revenue piece, right? There are assumptions made about how much of that revenue comes in year two and year three. Some of it's non-tax revenue, and some of it's the remainder of the override revenue, right? The other piece is, I mean, the only, the only thing that sort of creates other implications is that there's a lease purchase on the technology, and so there are some implications that you don't, you can't zero out. So there, there's some things like that, but that, I think that's the, I think that's the major piece.
What I was going to say is, net revenue to the school department from a, from the regular process, if you go back historically, you know, we would see budget growth in the three and a half, maybe 4%, you know, in terms of the net that would come to our operating budget, you know, depending on state aid, depending on health insurance costs, depending, you know, it's always depending on how those other costs move in any given year. So, you know, the pattern is about a 3.5% to 4% in some years. And so what you see, the base number this year, without that additional cuts on the town side, was that $3.2 million number. That's about what we'd see in terms of enroll, of revenue growth for each of the next few years without an override, and that's why we're, that's why we've, we've been in the past squeezed to only fund enrollment, only fund mandated costs, and squeezed through collective bargaining, and then have not, not had the money to do the, what we call the catch-up, those supports that are so big in this particular organization.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, we don't need to do it right now, but I think there is just the, the multi-year effect, right? I think one, one question that, that we, we get out in the community is, why doesn't this look as bad as the 65% scenario looked?
Why doesn't what?
Why doesn't this no-override budget look as bad? And I think the answer is, it looks worse if you kind of-
It's much worse. I don't think that, that's, I don't think it's a fair side-by-side.
But I think that's because people don't see things like elementary world language on it.
Right.
So I think there are just some, some big pieces. And I think the other thing that this doesn't completely convey is, again, to Lisa's point, that, that there are cuts that come after this. And so I think that's the piece where, when we look at multi-year budgets, that that, it's 1.2 the second, 1.3 the second year, there's probably deficits beyond that as we think about this growth. So I don't think it's a complicated calculation, but anyway, it's just worth keeping in mind that it's not like it's 1.15 this year and then 1.3 next year. There are then, if, under a no, permanent no-override scenario with the enrollment growth, there are continuing budget cuts every year. So I think that's just one thing for people to anchor on, that, I think the second thing is just on the flip side of that, that this is a three-year budget projection. And I'm sorry if you explained this already, but this sort of deals with the enrollment that we are looking at for now. I mean, you had previously given to the override study committee a year and a half ago, you given to us sort of projections past a three-year timeframe.
FY '22.
And, and in those, and in those years, there were still additional needs because we are still seeing enrollment growth. It's not that, I don't think anybody's under any illusions, and you've said it multiple times, we've said it multiple times, that, that this sort of solves the entire problem. In fact, the override study committee document said it does not solve the entire problem. And so I think just part of that for, for people to keep in mind is understanding that and, you know, and obviously that, that, that has implications.
Can I just, can I just say one more thing on that point? Because I think part of what I'm going back to in my mind is, when we started this conversation, you, you very clearly helped us understand that we currently have a structural deficit and that in an override gets-pass situation, we're able to do some things, but we aren't able to fully eliminate that structural deficit. We move further than we might then in a no-override. But to Susan's point, that keeps going because none of these scenarios fully address that. So I think that's part of what I was thinking about.
Well, some of that's been addressed by, by our surpluses, though.
When we tried to patch it through.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just to the point about the, so, so we have, I think they're still out there somewhere floating around. I mean, we, we provided budget models through FY '22. You know, we, we need to go back through those. We're not going to go through, we're not going to go through them through FY '22. What we are going to do in the next month, month and a half, is go through them for '17 and '18. Because we do, one, two, as much as we can, say to people, okay, here's 25 pages of detail on FY '16, and here's a little bit less, quite a bit less, but detail, right, of, of if you make certain assumptions, which we've made, right, of what that looks like in '17 and '18 within what's, what's been put on the table with the question that's in front of voters and the non-tax revenues that are part of that discussion. So we want to be able to say, here are the three years. And I think a point we, we've talked about before, and here are some of the challenges beyond that. Because if you, I want to say to this group, right, say out loud that, you know, the challenges beyond that were high school. I mean, if you, if you had to put a headline on the challenges beyond that, it's Brookline High School. I mean, I actually think there's one year in there where it was north of 10 FTE because of the spike in growth that hit Brookline High School between 19, between 2019 and 2021, somewhere in that neighborhood, right? So Brookline High School hasn't begun in this three-year period to experience this growth, and they're going to.
Rebecca?
Thank you. So I've, now that I've taken a moment, I have a couple of just very specific questions about what you put up on the screen, just for, so I can clarify it. And then I have a larger, as, as Dr. Jackson would say, a sort of a more clarifying question. So I, you have a grant contingency of $100,000 up there, and, but you said we're, we know or we suspect that we are losing $250,000 in a kindergarten grant? So how does that juxtapose?
Quite simply, right now, in rough numbers, because the numbers, the numbers assumed for Chapter 70 and unrestricted general government aid are larger than the numbers that are built into the model. So there's, there could be, as we play this out, some offset. So, there's, there could be, as we play this out, some offset. That's how.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, and, let me see, what's my next one? So, I know that the, we've talked so much about the technology plan, and that, and I know that, that what was proposed in all of your budget presentations that you've done, was a scaled-back version of that plan from where we started. And so, I understand, and I hope by now, other people who have listened to our techno, to your technology presentations, understand that essentially what we're putting in place here in year two is still building blocks. Because, you know, you look up at that plan, and you think, year two of a plan, and we're talking about some pretty basic things, and-
Talking about plumbing.
We're talking about plumbing. And so, my question is, this is still an investment of a significant amount of money in our technology plan. And so, at what point, if we are fortunate enough to be able to do that plan, to implement that plan the way you've described it, will students really start feeling the difference? When does that translate into the kinds of classrooms that we've all been dreaming of, and that Alan November gave that, gave his wonderful presentation on, and the things that we've seen in other districts, when they come in and do the presentation at the State House a couple of years ago, about the amazing work that's done? When do our students, if we are fortunate enough to be able to take this comparative leap, comparative to what we've done, forward, at what point do we start seeing that as coming back to the kids?
I mean, I mean, so here's, yeah, I mean, I mean, so, in large part, the answer to that is, that's another plan. Because this is, this is a four-year plumbing plan.
This is to get us-
But I will say, so I want to separate your questions, because the answer to your first question is right now.
Please do.
So, you said, when will students? And you've heard that, right? You've heard our student rep.
Yeah.
You've heard other students, you've heard staff members, you've been in buildings, you've talked to teachers, and you've heard them talk about what they can do right now that they couldn't do two years ago. So, it's right now. Right? In term, and even the answer on the second one is, you know, there are some people doing that now. We've outfitted some classrooms, not to where they should be or where we want them to be, but they are able to do some of those things that you can hear people like that talk about. But, but this is, I mean, we've said from the beginning, we were considerably lacking in this area, because it hasn't been a priority of this district for some number of years. That tends to be true of these kind of districts, right or wrong, and I'd say wrong. I mean, I think, I think this is still a largely put the, put the tools of a, you know, of a classroom suited for this time, and the tools for kids in front of them, kind of a plan. I think.
And, and the equity of-
Yeah, well, in front of all of them, yes. In front of all of them.
No, I was struck by the number of in-focus machines that we, that we would be putting in. I was, I didn't realize that we had so many classrooms still without the overhead projectors. I didn't realize it was that, that high.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Yeah, it's huge.
And that's a, that's a pretty basic-
It's a pretty basic piece of plumbing.
Piece of what's going on today. So, I, okay, that's, that's helpful. Because when I, when I, Susan says, when we're out there in the community and talking to people about what we would like to be able to do, what we would like to be able to offer our teachers and our students, especially in terms of technology, I start to sing the songs that we have, you know, about what we've seen, the potential that we've seen in other districts. And I just, I don't have a, I don't have a good sense for-
Well, normally in other districts, but I do want to, I do want to just reiterate this other point, right, that-
I know we do it in some, in some classes we're doing.
No, no, I was going to say, what we've seen, what we've seen, which is, which is just evidence of what we can see, right, is, we've been able to accomplish this much on this, right? And, and we already have some people who are doing some really amazing things just with, with that, right? Who've been able to do that. I mean, I, I use the silly example about when, when all the buildings had, what I'll call tonight, robust wireless access, it was night and day. Because there were, I think I've mentioned it before, there were people who before were viewed as kind of people who wanted to be able to use the technology in their instruction, who, when we went and asked them to try out certain things, they said, no. Because there's not even a robot, but when that happened, it was, it was takeoff for some of those people. So, you know, little things can inspire pretty, pretty rapid progress. But, we have, we have those numbers on, on the number of classrooms throughout the district that have overhead projection, and it's, it's, it's poor.
Yeah.
It's very poor. We've been able to move much quicker at buildings that we've renovated, because, thanks to Ms. Charlofsky, Mr. Pollak, and others, we've been able to hold the line when value engineering comes along and say, take your value engineering somewhere else. Take it out of somewhere else, because this plan needs to be part of it. That's how we get a quick fix on this.
But I just, can I just underscore this conversation? Because I think that just the, what exactly is the, the need, right, is important. Because I don't think, I did, and I do think that there's a range of opinions out there that, and I think there is more consistency in here, but it's important that there be, I mean, this is not an outstanding, excellent, world-class, cutting-edge education technology plan.
No.
What this is, is this is significantly better, and getting us to good, right, very good.
And equitable.
And equitable. And I think that, you know, we will end up with a, with our teachers who have support and have professional development, have onsite people who can help them integrate the technology into the curriculum, which is, you didn't talk about it much here, but that's obviously like the key piece, which is not just sticking devices in people's hands, but actually giving them the coaching support. We spent so much time talking about this, giving them the supports to be able to integrate it into the curriculum, that it will get that, that will make it a very good, right, in their, in their hands.
Right.
But I think nobody should be under any illusions that this is more than that. And, and certainly, if people want a wish list, I have one.
But do I?
I've been to those schools. You've been to those schools. Some of, some peoples come from districts where that's what's happening in their schools, because we all hear about that on a regular basis. And so, I think what we are getting is something very good, but we're not getting outstanding, excellent, cutting-edge, world-class with this. So, that's one person's opinion, but I, I think that's, is that helpful?
Yeah. I don't know, and I just, I want to understand it as a building block, because it is hard to, it is hard to absorb it as, you know, sort of, a great aspirational thing when it's really plumbing.
Right. No, it is, because we're so far behind because of enrollment.
Right.
Yeah.
I just want to get some clarity on that.
This is getting us back to very good, because we're not there now.
So, continuing in my sort of questions that came up during different pieces. So, the parent center is, I think, a fantastic thing. I know we've been talking about it for years, in terms of putting it together, just the Office of Student Affairs consolidating things. But could you say a little bit more about, you said it's, I, you know, that families, that it's really better for families? And I get that. So, my question is, and I, I don't, I think it's obvious why it's better for families, because they can go to one place for everything and take care of it. But can you talk about what it does for our buildings as well? I mean, what, what is the parent center, the Office of Student Affairs, the centralized registration, right, is, as I understand it, taking a significant load off of the individual school offices?
So, let me, let me talk about two pieces, right? So, let me come to that in a second. But let, but let me say that, you know, research and accountability is very motivated by this as well, because they tend to get cleaner data.
Right.
I mean, because one of the concepts we've talked about over time-
That was one of my questions, are we getting better data?
Right. One of the things we've talked about over time is that when you have, you know, eight to 10 to 12 different people, like, like the whole conversation we had about special ed years ago, when you have 20 people chairing IEP meetings, you get meetings that look like 20 people chaired, right? You do. Same thing here, where you've got all, doesn't matter how much you've tried to standardize, right, it doesn't happen that way. So, they're getting better, what they would call a sort of beginning data, right? And that's very important, because that's where a lot of bad things can happen. But what the buildings are getting is they're relieved of a tremendous responsibility, right? I mean, they don't have people coming there to register. People still are going to want to visit the school, but they can focus then on what the school does, which is talk to kids about, kids and families about education, and not have to worry about, you know, this lengthy registration and paper process. Plus, what we get to do is deliver a consistent message. I don't know how many times we've had the experience where we've run into a family that's been here for, and by the way, this is no one's fault, where we run into a family that's been here X number of years, and they're asking about adult and community education, or they're asking about services available through X agency or Y agency, and we say, well, didn't you get, you know, the material? We have material there at every building to distribute. No, I didn't get that. Right? Because when you go across eight or 10 places, it becomes much more inconsistent. In a parent center, we have on, so we have software embedded in here, now that we're talking about online ability to register and modify data, right? So, they can come in, they can talk to people from ELL. Our vision is, is number of other services, whether it's steps to success, whether it's special education, would all have a presence there, right? So that they can begin to access the kinds of things that they need, adult and community education. As we play this out, we see all those things, and a number of the agencies in town having a presence there, so that people can, can talk with them, can figure out what this town's about, because it's a complicated place. And it's a complicated place in terms of accessing those services. And if I were, you know, I did a forum a number of years ago with, with, with parents who were Spanish-speaking, and, and had a translator with me, and, and I've always been struck by that, by that forum, which, by the way, I need to do again, right? But I've always been struck by, I said, what is the one thing that you want me to do for you? And they said, show us how to navigate the schools. One person said, I see this person who goes into the principal's office all the time. I want to know how to do that. I don't know how you do that. I hear about these agencies, people say, this is over here, and all you have to do is go there, and you can get service. I don't even know where that is. Help me do that. And that's what we're trying to do. So, but for the buildings, it's, it's efficient. It takes a huge responsibility and allows that secretary, that vice principal, that principal, that, that aide, to get back to the business that they're supposed to be in, which is, what are we doing here with kids and teachers?
And now for the big question. So-
I was hoping that was it.
No. No. So, larger framing, we have, we have this event on May 5th. And you said that up until May 5th, you are essentially, along with your staff in the buildings, implementing both budgets.
We are.
So, what happens after May 5th?
We stop implementing one of them.
Right. So-
That's not funny.
So, I-
Your question.
It does answer the question. How do we proceed on, on May 6th if, if the override does not pass? Can we, what happens in May and June to get ready for September if the override does not pass?
Well, so, we haven't played out all aspects of that yet. I mean, we, we have some planning sessions set up around looking at other pieces of that. I mean, the very first thing, we've already talked with you about, right? The, the union leadership, thank you, Jess, who's here, was terrific in talking with us about implementation issues. So, we actually have a waiver, if you will, for budget-related non-renewals until the end of that week. So, the very first thing that happens on the 6th is we implement the lists, because we wouldn't wait till then, that we've already developed of who gets those notices. Okay? That's, that's step one. Right? But, but I have to say, so, the other thing that will be happening in the interim that we did talk about today is, you know, we have to play out, so I'll give you an example without naming the school, right, without naming schools. So, we know right now, we have a retirement in grade X at school Y, right? But we also have these consolidations. So, we have to work with that principal around who wants to fill that position, who wants to fill that position. But we have to worry about this as well, these, these five people, some of whom may need positions, or, you know, may, maybe people, people want to hire, but I don't want to go over there unless I have to, I'd rather stay here. We have to work through all that. But that won't wait till May 5th. We have to be doing that now. So, when I say, we're having those conversations, we're developing both plans, some of it's messy, and will prevent us, the very fact that we're dealing with this on May 5th will prevent us from doing some things that we should be doing now.
Right.
I think that's a really key point. The fact that this question isn't asked until May 5th. Conversation with some people who ask these kinds of questions earlier, and you've got the benefit of their wisdom as to why their communities do that, but that's neither here nor there, we deal with May 5th. But it will prevent us until, from doing some things that need to be done until May 5th or later. And, and that's an example. This person knows they have a retirement, and yet, we're going to play this, this kind of game until then, because we, we have to.
And you said you're doing school assignments by, on May 15th, or final school assignments on May 15th?
Well, what we've said is, we do school assignments for anybody who's registered by then, but that won't be terribly impacted by that, because remember, we're not looking at those consolidations, at least in what we've recommended to you in the primary level. We do have, to your point, though, we do have kids who register in other grades.
Right.
That slide, and that May 15th, was about kindergarten.
Okay. So, so in terms of the consolidations, when, when do we, when do we know about that? So, so, my assumption is that if we're going to have to do those consolidations, that that would go into the planning that gets done largely before July, because-
Yeah. Absolutely.
Kids get a school.
Oh, sure. I'm thinking, I mean, right now, we're looking at it sort of as mid to late April. And, and so, what I can specifically tell you is that on Monday, we really begin that conversation in earnest. We have, we have, we have data on some of the elements that I talked with you about during this presentation. We're going to share that with principals. We're going to talk with them about the decision-making process. We're going to maybe ask them to gather additional data from us, for us, right? And then, we're going to talk about the fact that in the next two to four weeks, we probably make preliminary decisions. And preliminary decisions may mean taking that list of 10 or 11, and narrowing it to six or seven.
Okay.
But we'd like to play that out, because it actually allows us, if we knew what the five were today, our lives would be much simpler, and it would be easier to do all these other things that need to follow.
But assuming that you know what they are, again-
Yeah.
-in the absence of an override succeeding, those consolidations go into effect, right?
You adopt this budget recommendation, and I quite frankly, don't know how you accomplish, you know, what we're trying to lay out here without doing that. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And, and finally, you said that we are, there's a whole series of, of positions that are in the override budget that we are currently interviewing for?
No.
No.
No. So, we haven't done any of that yet. The process that we're involved in right now is taking these two models, these two proposals, and, and putting positions into, into one of three buckets. Bucket one are positions that are in both spending plans that we know we're going to do. They will at some point be advertised as openings. Okay? Bucket two are positions that are in the override spending plan.
And those are the anticipated.
They are anticipated. Bucket three, very interesting, complicated, these are positions that require us to have conversations with the union, because they're changes, right? And so, we have a list of those. Or where we haven't yet told you the details, right? That's bucket three. Okay? And we're working on all three, and we'll be discussing those three buckets at senior staff next week. Right, Dr. Allen? Yes, next week.
And a lot of those basically just stop.
Sorry?
...on May 6th.
Well, certainly bucket two ends should the question not be successful.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm done.
Can I just ask the correlation to that? I mean, when is the bulk of teacher hiring in Massachusetts done? I mean, clearly, some is done early, some is done, you know, the day after Labor Day when we add a section and devotion, but like, you know, when's the bulk done?
So, sorry, at least two different answers to that. So there's always some semblance of hiring that goes on in May and June, but a lot of districts will start very soon because a lot of towns in particular have started, have gotten to a point in their budget process where they're confident that they can go out, they know about certain retirements, and they'll be out there very soon. And we will, we normally trail them by a little bit because our process is late, but it's not anything that terribly impacts us. This year will impact us. This is very late because this actually says, there's very little, there are some things, but there's very little we can do until May the 6th. There will be some things we can do. We'll figure it out, and where we can, we'll move. But given that proposal, it's minimal.
Other questions?
So just in terms of next steps on this, I mean, clearly, there were a number of things that you said off-slide, which were great, except they're not on the slides. And so I'm kind of wondering, for people, if we send these slides out there, I mean, even things like, you know, Lisa's question about, you know, what happens in year two? What does an anticipated number look like? What happens to elementary world language? I mean, Rebecca's question about the different, like what's, you know, clear and not clear about the differences? What's, I mean, what's a, there must be some, yes.
Here's what we do in these situations.
Some are far.
First of all, I have some cleaning up to do on this.
Right.
But the message will be posted. It's already going out to staff. It'll go out in some form to parents. What we do is, I've already asked Brookline Interactive to cull this presentation, which is a little long, to cull this presentation, we will, thank you for laughing at that. We will, we'll put this presentation up. I mean, we can even, we can even talk with them, we've not done this before, if there are specific kinds of issues as we go through it. We could take an issue like this, the impact on elementary world language, and we could cull it out, the impact on staffing, we could cull it out. So we can do that with them.
Yeah.
They're willing to help us with some of that.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm also just wondering, I mean, sometimes people aren't going to watch the video. So I guess part of what I'm wondering is, there's, it seems like there are just a couple simple things to clean up, and, you know, or like the one-pager that Peter is making on the differences or whatever it is, and...
He's got some other slides to show you.
Right, right. I didn't see it in there. But I guess it would just be helpful to get something out quickly, and then I think there are probably pieces that we might need to explicate a little bit more, maybe from Robin's notes, we can just pull out some specific additions from the discussion so people don't have to go through the whole BATV thing. You can just link to it and people can see it.
Saying they wouldn't want to watch it?
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
I see I'm scheduled for an hour.
Which you're not going to take.
Correct.
Ms. Dunn, please let that be your character note.
Thank you, though.
Dr. Dunn? Are you Ms. Dunn? Doctor? Ms.?
Thanks, Robin. Where am I here?